Good afternoon. My name is Max Parker. I'm the Vice President of the San Angelo Independent School District School Board. Our President Lanny Layman is out of town and I'm, uh, will be sitting in for him. On our agenda, the first thing I need to do is to make sure we have a quorum, and we do. I need to read a script that we have on each one of our meetings that sets out a little bit of our rules. I've already welcomed you. I want to welcome not only those who are present here in our meeting, but I want to welcome all who are watching a tape of this meeting on our public access channel, Channel 4. We appreciate your interest in our students. All items we discussed at this meeting have already, have been posted as required by state law, and as most of you are aware, our board meets a minimum of two times a month, and most, if not all, the items that are on our agenda this evening have been previously discussed at our pre-agenda board workshop, which was held last Monday. As members of the SAISD Board of Trustees, we're here to set goals, listen to reports from our superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the district. Please keep in mind that our meeting is a meeting of the Board of Trustees held in public and not a meeting of the public. However, with that in mind, we have an item on every one of our meeting agendas that allows anyone present who wishes to speak to our board team an opportunity to do so. I will make certain that we give everyone an opportunity to speak on any item not listed on our agenda. Additionally, prior to taking any votes, I will ask audience members if they would like to make any comments. Anyone wishing to make comments on any agenda item should do their best to limit their comments to five minutes. In compliance with state law, these proceedings are recorded and will become a part of SAISD's permanent legal record. In order that the tape will adequately reflect the proceedings, I ask that you please refrain from talking while others are speaking. I also ask, as I remind my fellow board members, to please turn off or silence your cell phones. I hope I've done that. Again, it's my pleasure to welcome you to tonight's meeting, and thank you for taking time to join us this evening. We appreciate your interest in the activities of our students and the business of our district. With that said, I'm now going to ask Brian Carroll, who's the Associate Pastor of Journey Bible Church, to give our invocation.
Thank you, Board, for having me. That's hot. Thank you, Board, for having me this evening. Will you guys please join me in prayer? Well, we thank you so much for being so kind to us, so loving, so patient, so gracious with us. You are a good God. God, you see things we don't, and so, Lord, on that knowledge, we just ask tonight that as decisions are being made and as the board is handling policies and things that are for the benefit, benefit for our kids here in San Angelo, we just pray that you would give them the wisdom and guidance that they need. God, give them the clarity of mind, give them the things that they need to make these decisions. Well, we pray for the students as they are out this summer, God, as many of them are traveling or they are with their friends. We just pray that you'd keep them safe. We ask that you would return them back to us in the fall, ready to go, and God, we just pray that regardless of their circumstance that they might be coming from, that you would give them opportunities each day to experience love, kindness, and ultimately your presence in some way. So, God, we are so thankful for your goodness. We thank you for Jesus. We praise these things in his son's name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Carroll. As he just, the pastor just mentioned, our kids are out of school for the summer, and they would normally lead us in our pledge of allegiance, and so I will do that tonight if everyone will please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the city of Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
As I mentioned in the introductory statement, anyone that would wish to give any comments publicly that are pertaining to something not on our agenda should come forward now. I see no one coming, so at this time, I'll turn things over to Jennifer Crutchfield in some recognitions.
Good evening, Dr. Detloff, Mr. Parker, members of the board, and guests. Tonight, we recognize three campuses where teachers and staff do a great job connecting students with their peers and adults on campus to create classrooms where students are excited to learn every day. Since 1990, campuses across the country have experienced amazing outcomes with capturing kids' hearts, tools, and processes, creating the social and emotional safety conducive to learning. Flippin Group provides educators the skills they need to change the trajectory of students' lives. Openness replaces defensiveness; judging and feelings of being judged are replaced with acceptance and real connectedness to school. Campuses consistently implementing capturing kids' hearts processes often report increases in academic improvement and reductions in discipline referrals. Through the National Showcase Schools Awards, Flippin Group seeks to recognize and celebrate schools that go the extra mile each day, building an environment where students and staff feel safe and connected. Flippin Group believes the unsung heroes who produce exemplary outcomes in schools and pave the way for other schools to follow need and deserve recognition for a job well done. Capturing Kids' Hearts campuses across the country were considered for this award based on the following criteria. First, nomination based on observation by Flippin Group personnel. Second, level of staff implementation of capturing kids' hearts processes as measured by online surveys. Third, perceived climate and culture of the campus as measured by staff surveys. And fourth, a student survey to measure their attitude and connectedness to school. Only 202 schools are recognized across the nation as national showcase schools. These campuses will be honored and celebrated throughout the coming year as national showcase schools. In addition to public recognition, the campus will receive a banner to proudly display their achievement. Tonight, we will present each campus with a certificate as we recognize them for this tremendous achievement. Please join me in congratulating Bradford, Goliad, and Holloman Elementary Schools for being recognized as national showcase schools for exemplary implementation of capturing kids' hearts.
(applause)
a former principal in my previous district communicated with me recently. He said, "Carl, do you understand?" He is a current Senior Associate for the Flippin Group, and he said, "Do you understand your school district? There are not many school districts in the entire nation that receive this many national showcase awards." So, thank you for doing the right things for kids and setting them up for success in the future. So, congratulations. Congratulations again to Holloman, Bradford, and Goliad Elementary Schools and all of you that came to accept these awards for these fine elementary schools. We're now on number six on our agenda, which is approval of our minutes for May 13, 2019, and May 20, 2019. I have a motion by Mr. Dindell and a second by Mr. Hernandez to approve the minutes for May 13 and May 20, 2019. Is there any board discussion on this? Is there any public comment about this? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say the same. Motion passes. We now have, and I don't know if there's anything, Mr. Bright, Dr. Bright, do you have anything on a student enrollment report?
No.
And Dr. Detloff, on our partnership with Good Fellow Air Force Base?
No report.
Okay. Those are items that are standing items on our agenda. And Dr. Ritter, update on academic progress?
Thank you, Mr. Parker, Dr. Detloff, and members of the board. We just wanted to provide just a bit of a, an update on our work that we have been doing with our measures of academic progress, our map testing, our assessment that we've done in the district this year. We were able to host a day last week with our campus principals and leadership teams who came together, and we did a great process of trying to evaluate the effectiveness of the whole process and evaluating whether we really felt that this was a valuable tool. And so, some of the things that they wanted to share with the board in saying that, you know, being a new tool, and we started this process, as you remember, we approved it kind of late in the summer, I guess even maybe in August. So then we started the process and did beginning-of-year testing, middle-of-year testing, and end-of-year testing in grades, second grade, second through eighth grade, with reading and math for all, and then we also did science for fifth grade and eighth grade, just as an initial year to start. And they tell us, you know, as you're, phenomenal training and professional learning support that goes along with that, they say, really, that first year, you're looking at how your processes are supporting what's going on. You're building it into a part of a system, a systemic piece of the work that you do in your district. And so, just some of the feedback, it went very well. It was a, it was a big change for our teachers. It was a lot of, you know, it's time involved, and certainly changing some systems on campuses with scheduling and, but also wanting to process their feedback on how we can, how we can improve the system for next year. But they all overwhelmingly, our campuses felt like it was a very valuable tool for some of these reasons. The professional learning that they received through that, along with their coaching with Math Solutions and Scholastic, they found that the data really supported those practices, that they are able to see that map data takes the improvement child by child, skill by skill, through our standards, to help determine if we're really meeting targets and goals and making improvements with every child, unlike any tool we've ever had before. It was very helpful in supporting teachers and implementing best practice and utilizing the data to adjust and customize the instruction to meet the individual needs of students. They were learning how to utilize data that they, again, they just haven't had this kind of data before, in a process as quadrant disaggregation to assist them in customization of instruction with their students, to help them with small groups of instruction and interventions. Timely feedback that it provided, there was a quick turnaround from the time the students would take the assessment to the time the teachers would have it in their hands as results. And so, being a learning year and learning, what does this all mean? How does this, how does this data really help inform our practice? The principals came here and said, you know, we felt that having those conversations, it really shifts the conversation in our professional learning communities on our campuses, and that is, that is what we want. We want it to be part of a process, a part of our system that is built in to what we do every day. They felt that, you know, some of the things that we're going to be adjusting next year as a part of this also, they wanted earlier data in the fall, and we started just a little bit late because that's when we contracted with the company. But starting it a little bit earlier, we're going to have, they suggest, you know, four weeks after the start of school, so we'll be having that beginning-of-year, again, then the middle-of-year, and then end-of-year data. And seeing the growth of students across the board on their campuses was very, very powerful, but what it also did for us, it allowed us to look individually at students who maybe fell into the quadrant of not showing growth, and those were the students that you really had to pay attention, paid attention to all of them, of course, but it's just the students that weren't making growth. What are the reasons for that? What can we do? What is our response to, to all of it that we had indicated, as well as students kind of at the other end of the spectrum who maybe performed very well in the classroom, but maybe some of those students weren't making growth? So, how can we make sure that we're pulling the string for all kids and that we're customizing instruction to be responsive to their needs regardless of how they're performing in the classroom and on other assessments? So, it was, it was a great year for map assessment, and we look forward to another year with this, and we're going to be expanding to have Algebra I also to give us some data with that. It's helping right now as principals utilize this data to help them with placement for students for the next school year, so it's a tool they have not had before. So, something that they are using to make data-informed decisions to really try to do what is best for our students and to customize their educational experience. So, are there any, any questions?
When you do the map testing, I know you said the first, middle, and end of the year, but like, I know you got star tests somewhere in there.
Right.
At the end of the year. Did y'all take them before or after those were?
So, there's a window, and we allowed, being the first year, we allowed the campuses some flexibility to determine. We knew middle schools, they were very, they're kind of, they're tested a lot because they have so many content areas that are tested in the grade levels. So, they adjusted and wanted to do it later. Our elementaries chose to do it a little bit earlier, but that's all feedback for us to determine, and we want to give some flexibility with that while still staying in the window so that you have that alignment and so that your data is reliable because you're, you know, it's compared to the other schools that we're using in our district as well who are testing, so.
Dr. Ritter, I just want to add also for our public and any viewers this evening that the map assessment that you just discussed earlier in the year was funded by our school board. And so, looking at the needs of our district, where we have academic needs and looking at student success, we restructured the budgets and allocated different resources to these areas for the map assessment, which is a measurement of academic progress. So, this is the first year, as Dr. Ritter indicated. I want to thank you and your staff for making sure this was a smooth implementation with flexibility that really leads to student success. Also, I want to add that, you know, it's a multi-layered approach to really assessing students, and so this is a great tool in our toolbox to make sure that we, that kids read, write, and do math and that they are on grade level when we do that. So, I thank you for, for the curriculum instruction office and the executive directors, their work, and the Board of Trustees for placing the resources where the academic need is. And I believe with this evidence, we will move kids forward in their learning. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Board.
Thank you, Dr. Ritter. Next on our agenda is our consent items, and they will be consent items A through K. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
A motion to approve was made by Mr. Hernandez and a second by Ms. Maizele Flint. Is there any other board discussion on these? Let me go over those quickly then. Item A is donations, and we're very thankful for those, and some of them are listed on our overhead now of the donations that were made to our school district. B, consider inter-local agreement with Texas Educational Employers Benefit Cooperative. C, ratify administration's action in sale of properties. D, consider superintendent's recommendation for personnel for school year 2019-2020, and I think we, that includes an addendum, which we've all have at our desk tonight. E, consider content management system communication platform. F, consider bids for Child Nutrition Department for the 2019-2020 school year, frozen slash staple. G, consider bids for the Child Nutrition Department for the 2019-2020 school year, direct delivery produce and high-volume items. H, consider self-cleaning oven steamer. I, consider approval of multi-hazard emergency, emergency operations plan. J, consider delegate and alternate delegate for the Tazbe Convention. And K, review board operating procedures and standards. Is there any public comment on any of these items? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say the same. Motion passes. Item nine is on agenda is Consider Bid Number 19-006 District Copier Lease. Mr. Henry?
Dr. Detloff, Mr. Parker, members of the board, thank you for having me here today. The district currently leases 116 copiers. At this time, it is time to renew our bid for these machines. This bid will provide for our needs for the next 60 months. Copier quali, quantity will be increased to 125 to account for additional needs. Four companies responded to this proposal. Two of the companies emerged as front-runners in the initial evaluation. These two companies were asked to provide a demo to district end-users. This group consisted of administrators, district secretaries, curriculum and instruction, educators, and technology staff members. Following the demo, the evaluation team, consisting of a cross-section of the district, applied the scoring criteria. After the scoring criteria were, were applied, Curbos emerged as the highest score. At this point, as outlined in TEC 440352-D, we began to negotiate with the highest score. The proposal was negotiated to a 60-month agreement at $269,000 per year with an option for three one-year renewals. This proposal includes unlimited black and white copies and over 200,000 free copies per year. Once the free copies are used, all color copies will be .035 cents per copy. In addition to the Curbos offer, includes 13 additional fax cards to be installed. The base cost for this 60-month agreement is $1.345 million. Year one of the lease begins September 1st and will continue for 60 months, ending in August of 2025, with an option for three one-year renewals. The administration recommends approval of Curbos Office Systems of San Angelo for a 60-month agreement with an option of three one-year renewals to provide SAISD with 125 copiers. Base costs for these machines, maintenance, and supplies will be $269,000 per year for 60 months, followed by the renewal option at the same yearly price.
Thank you, Mr. Henry. Is there any other board discussion on this? I will tell our audience that we had a, last Monday, we had a long discussion on this with presentations by both of the companies that were identified as the two that were mentioned by Mr. Henry. Any other discussion? Is there any public comment that anybody wants to make? Do I, do we have a, a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Curbos Office Systems of San Angelo for a 60-month agreement with an option of three one-year renewals to provide SAISD with 125 copiers. Cost for these machines, maintenance, and supplies will be $269,000 per year for 60 months, followed by the renewal option at the same yearly price.
Thank you, Mr. Henry. Is there any other board discussion on this? I will tell our audience that we had a, last Monday, we had a long discussion on this with presentations by both of the companies that were identified as the two that were mentioned by Mr. Henry. Any other discussion? Is there any public comment that anybody wants to make? Do I, do we have a, a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Curbos Office Systems of San Angelo for a 60-month agreement with an option of three one-year renewals to provide SEISD with 125 copiers. Cost for these machines, maintenance, and supplies will be $269,000 per year or for 60 months, followed by the renewal options at the same yearly price.
Second? We have a motion by Mr. Gallegos and a second by Dr. Kingman to approve this agenda item. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say the same. Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Henry. Dr. Bright? There he is. Dr. Bright? Item 10 is Consider Compensation Increases.
Thank you, and good evening. Appreciate the opportunity to come up and discuss our district recommendation for salary proposal for 2019-20. Last week, we spent over an hour in pre-agenda discussing the basic elements of the new funding system and the impact of House Bill 3 and what it, what it has on property taxes, the language in the bill that is associated with the increase in funding, how it ties to required compensation increases, and we also looked at some preliminary revenue estimates. Tonight, we're not going to spend an hour on it, but we are going to touch on just a few of these elements and make sure our public understands how this is all going to work. So, yes, we have a new funding system in place now. It is exciting. It's the first time we've, that I've been involved where we've had this much money flow into the system at one time. There's a lot of changes on the internal workings of the system, but overall, the way the system functions, it hasn't changed. It is still a combination of property taxes plus state aid that fills the system up with money. And so, tonight, we're going to talk first about the impact of House Bill 3 and what it has on property taxes, the relief we're going to receive from House Bill 3 with property taxes, which has been long overdue, as you well know. First off, we're going to talk a little bit about the, the funding system, how it functions. And as a board, you have in-depth knowledge of this. You know this well, but we're going to explain just a few elements of it for our general public that, that may not quite understand how property taxes work in the funding system of Texas. And this is a slide you've seen many times. We present it every time we get a chance out in public, but we have to understand that school district property taxes do not function like the city and the county property taxes do. And we are all very well aware that as property values increase, the city and the county can hold their tax rates the same and generate new revenue just based on the increase in values. Now, while we may hold our tax rate the same and generate more local property taxes, we do not gain money in the system by, by the increase of collections. And the best illustration I've been able to find so far is kind of a, kind of a primitive-looking model, but it's, it's the old funding cup. Y'all have seen this before, but this is a simplistic view of how the system works, and I think it really makes the point. So, once the system... It is still a combination of property taxes plus state aid that fills the system up with money. And so, tonight, we're going to talk first about the impact of House Bill 3 and what it has on property taxes, the relief we're going to receive from House Bill 3 with property taxes, which has been long overdue, as you well know. First off, we're going to talk a little bit about the funding system, how it functions. And as a board, you have in-depth knowledge of this. You know this well. But we're going to explain just a few elements of it for our general public that may not quite understand how property taxes work in the funding system of Texas. And this is a slide you've seen many times. We present it every time we get a chance out in public. But we have to understand that school district property taxes do not function like the city and the county property taxes do. And we're all very well aware that as property values increase, the city and the county can hold their tax rates the same and generate new revenue just based on the increase in values. Now, while we may hold our tax rate the same and generate more local property taxes, we do not gain money in the system by the increase of collections. And the best illustration I've been able to find so far is kind of a primitive-looking model, but it's the old funding cup. Y'all have seen this before. But this is a simplistic view of how the system works, and I think it really makes the point. So, once the system figures out how much money we're going to receive as a district, we have this little cup that our money is going to be collected in. And the first thing that goes into the cup are our local property taxes. And it fills it up to as far as it can go at whatever the tax rate is and what our collection is in. Then the state comes in and simply fills up your cup. They do this for every district in the state. Now, some people's cups are a little bigger than others, which is an equity issue in the system, but, you know, for San Angelo, this is very similar to what we see. Now, what happens in the system is that not only locally, but the system as a whole, what happens over time is property values tend to increase, and collections locally go up. Well, instead of the districts gaining like the city and the county, all the state does is have less money to fill your cup with, okay? It takes less money, and that's as simple as it gets. Now, if you have a district that their money completely fills up the cup and it overflows, that's when you get into Robin Hood, and we didn't do a slide on that one. But that's the system, and it's simplistic picture there. Now, what happens also over time is that the system gets out of whack. The share, the state's share and the local's share, they get out of balance. And what happens is people start looking at it and saying, hey, why isn't the state kicking in more money? And where we're at right now, this is from the Legislative Budget Board, the state has started relying way too much on local property taxes to fund the educational funding system. And this is 6238. I've seen 6436 in other places. So, you know, depending on where you get your data, that's what happens. So, in order to correct this, you have to first understand that the system is huge. It's about 50 billion-plus. So, in order to correct it, it takes billions of dollars to make an impact into the system. It's a billion with a B. It's a big number, okay? And since the state does not print money, they have to pull taxes from somewhere. They get the money from somewhere, and it's used in taxes, and that's not a good word for legislators. So, the system is out of balance, and so, the state has come in and put in a lot of new money. They put in about 5 billion, well, they put in about 6 billion in the system and about 5 billion in property tax relief. And here's what the property tax relief is going to look like for San Angelo ISD. It's kind of a three-year plan. And so, next school year, San Angelo ISD will lower our maintenance and operations tax rate by seven pennies. It's currently $1.04. It will go down to 97 cents. So, our tax rate next year will look like this, 97 cents M&amp;O. We probably still have 17 cent INS tax rate to pay off our debt service, so we're going down from $1.21 to $1.14. I would bet the farm on it. That's where we're going to be, okay? Now, I told you it's a three-year plan. The second year of the plan, there's going to be a little bit of compression. Don't hold me to it, but probably a penny, penny and a half to a half penny, somewhere in that range, okay? Stick close to the penny range. The state's going to compress tax rates down again. And then, in year three of this plan, maybe you've heard of the governor's 2.5% limit plan. They're going to limit school districts to 2.5% new revenue. But what's going to happen is values are going to go up all different rates all over the state, and the state is kind of committed at this point to kick in more money for anything over the 2.5%. So, it's going to be interesting to see what happens in two years if the state's going to have the money to actually fund that, because it's going to take a lot of money again, and we know how that works. So, keep an eye on that. Year one and two are set in stone. Year three, it's in the bill, but we'll have to wait and see how that pans out, okay? All right. Also, in the new funding system, we have a big increase in what's called the basic allotment. We went over that. That's not part of this presentation tonight. But the executive summary is this, and this is in your board packet as well, in a kind of a letter form, that we are now required to spend 30% of the increase in funding from now on, it's in the language of the bill, on specific groups of employees and their compensation, okay? And y'all looked at that. It spells out teachers and counselors and nurses and anybody that's tied to the state minimum salary scale. They get us like 75% of that 30, and then the rest of the 30% goes to anybody else except school administrators, okay? We talked about that in depth last week. So, that's what's driving a lot of this compensation increase tonight. And so, let's just step right into what we're recommending. And you have a lot of detailed worksheets in the board packet that's not going to be up here, but you've had it, and we talked about it last week. So, here's what we're looking at. For a group of employees called the T family. The T family includes teachers, nurses, librarians, and a whole bunch of other type of teacher-type people, like instructional coaches, support people like that. So, what we're asking us to do tonight is increase our beginning salary for everyone in the T family to $41,500. That's really 4150 a month, because some people are on different contracts other than 10-month contracts. So, that's the first recommendation, 415 for beginning salaries. We're also looking at a general pay increase to the members of the T family and the counselors as outlined in House Bill 3. Part of House Bill 3 said that you must consider people with one to five years' experience differently than you do anybody with six or more years' experience, and the bill spells it out. Anyone with six or more years' experience should get more of a compensation increase than the one to fives. And so, that's what we've outlined in the packet. You'll see that years one to five generally get $200 a month, which would be $2,000 for a base teacher, and it can go as high as $585 a month when you get way on up into the years of experience, which is a 5,800-plus salary increase for somebody on a 10-month contract. So, very significant salary increase for the teachers and anybody in our T family. Our counselors are a little different than the state. They're not on the T family. They're on their own little pay grade. So, what we did with them was very similar to what we did to the T family. The first group has 200 a month, and I think they're all at least 10 and 1/2-month contracts, so it'll be at least $2,100 per employee. And then, it's a graduated scale all the way up to years 20 and over, and I think that is like 350 a month. And so, those, you'll see several of those with 12-month contracts. Our more experienced counselors have 12-month contracts in some cases. So, that could be a $4,200 a year salary increase for those employees. Hey, the base cost for doing this is $3.75 million. That's what we calculated. Our next recommendation, and you have the detailed worksheets as well, is all of our other pay grades. We have four other pay grades. We're wanting to move the boxes 2%. And there were two that we told you were outliers, that we changed them a little more than 2%, and give a 3% general pay increase, which comes from the midpoint of the new pay grade, for all the returning employees in all job families. Cost of that is approximately $972,000, okay? So, let me go back here. So, so far, this is a big number also. This is one of the biggest I've seen since I've been here 17 years. Approximately 5.172 million salary increase, and all of that's, a lot of that is a function of House Bill 3. But we're not through. We've got more good news.
And Dr. Bright, may you back up one slide, please? And I just want to reiterate to our San Angelo community that that 5.172 million is indeed the largest sum that we have placed into salary and compensation. But I also want to reiterate that that is mandated by law. So, the teacher family that Dr. Bright indicated earlier, that raise is mandated by law, and it will impact every single public school district across the state of Texas. So, I think I'm excited, because our classroom teachers and all employees in the T family deserve that for many, many years, and I'm glad the state has bolstered that compensation for our staff. Additionally, in previous years, we've been fortunate enough that our board has approved 2% to 3% pay increases for all employees, and that certainly helps us with retention and recruitment of the best and the brightest in Texas. So, I do want to thank you, Dr. Bright, and just again tell our audience that that $5 million, much of that is mandated by law according to House Bill 3.
And school districts all over the state are dealing with it differently. In fact, I sent y'all an article from Frisco. Theirs was a lot lower than ours. But then, I also heard some others this weekend. The Dallas Metroplex area northeast, big, big money up there, and they're all fighting for teachers up there. I mean, their starting pay is $56,000 a year in some of those districts. It's incredible, incredible. I'm going to tell you, they're going to hit a wall soon, and they're going to hit a wall. And I'm going to say, I told you so, okay? But anyway, yes, thanks, Dr. Duttloff, for saying it. For our teachers, 2,000 is probably close to 4% midpoint, and some of our upper levels, it may be almost 10%. You know, if they were at 40-something and they get a $5,800 raise, that's over 10%. So, there's some significant money going into the system, and well-deserved, like you said.
And I will add, Dr. Bright, in my tenure in human resources, our district struggled with retention and recruitment of the six-to-10-year teacher, six-years' experience on really to the 10 to 15-years' experience. So, I applaud. I know there's some, it's always controversial with legislative sessions, but I certainly applaud our local legislators as well for making certain that we are able to provide those six-year and above teachers the compensation they deserve.
Okay. Next, we're going to health insurance. TRS Active Care has increased the base cost of the lowest plan that they offer, and we would like to continue offering a no-cost option to our employees. And our current contribution is 370. We'd like to go up to 380 per month, $10 a month, $120 a year, and it has a cost of about $235,000. We looked at a chart last week, about 75, 80% of our employees take health insurance. We have a, you know, 300 or 400 that do not, for whatever reason. They have other coverage or whatever. But this would be a total cost of 235 max if everyone took the health insurance, okay? We'd also like to make a recommendation to continue to provide the $500 health insurance supplement to all the staff in the district. There are requirements that have to be met in order to qualify for it. Employees must work between September 1st and November 30th. There's no prorated amounts given. If you come in after September 1st, you're not eligible. If you leave before November 30th, you're not eligible, okay? They must stay in that window, and we pay that out to all staff in their December paychecks. And so, we're able to do that again. We're looking at just under $1 million to continue that compensation for our employees. Okay, so when we put all of these things together, we looked at about 5.4 million one-time cost of $995, and then we look at, really, we're looking at the general funds where I like to live at, because we must be able to sustain that on the funding that we receive from the system. So, we're looking at about 4.6 million out of the general fund, sustainable cost. The $995 does come out of the general fund, but we also have a number of employees, you can see the difference, it looks like about 800,000, just doing some quick math, that come out of other funds. It might be child nutrition, it might be Title I, other places, okay? So, about 4.6 million in the general fund. We also made several changes to our extra duty and stipends. We looked at that last week, and the details are in your handout. Anything that has a yellow highlight is a change from last school year. We made significant changes to some of our substitute teacher pay. Farah discussed that. We're going to have added money for Mondays and Fridays, and I think we just increased pay for every category basically as well. So, yeah, differential pay this next school year for Mondays and Fridays to see if that doesn't help with some of our shortages of substitute teachers. That is it. That's short and sweet. Like I said, we spent over an hour last week going through this. If there's something you think we left out that you think the general public would like to know, please help us and fill in the gaps. Other than that, we're looking for a motion.
Jeff, the only thing I would say is why House Bill 3 has done a ton of money into the district, and it doesn't really change the M&amp;O, INS platform that the district has to survive on. And so, I think when we're talking about House Bill 3, it's important to note, yes, we have a lot more money, but most of that money is tied to compensation and where it needs to be, but it doesn't really change how, as a district, we can run the business of the district.
Right. And I think we're going to be in good shape for the next couple of years, and then there's going to be some decisions that's going to have to be made again. But every school in the state's going to deal with it as well. Dr. B?
Yes, sir. I want to add to Dr. Kingman's statement. Again, this, the additional monies do not and will not be able to help with facilities funding. So, any large-scale facilities projects, this increase in funding for our district does not help. But again, the funding increase certainly helps the compensation for our staff that is so important for us to continue our mission. I also want to add that Dr. Bright drove in from Austin today and is driving out again because he is involved in multiple committees and boards with experts on public education in our state. So, I just want to commend Dr. Bright and his staff. He's highly involved on many boards across the state that look closely with the resident experts in working through fiscal challenges and House Bill 3 challenges across our state. So, I want to thank you for that, Dr. Bright, as well.
Just try to stand close to them and let their naughtage blow on me. There's some sharp people in our state. Mr. Parker?
I just wanted to reiterate, you've said it a few times, but our meeting tonight may only last an hour, hour and a half, and the last meeting was one of the longer ones we've had in the past four or five years, because we went 10:00 or 10:30, about a five-hour meeting. So, we had a lot of discussion about this last week, and I appreciate your efforts to keep us advised and explain this to us. And I know you took a lot more time last week, and I will encourage any of the persons that are watching this on our television, if there's something you don't understand, don't hesitate to contact one of us, and we'll put you in touch with Dr. Bright, so he can explain it to you better. But it's, and I'll praise our state representative, Drew Darby. This was a, this is good for our school districts, good for all school districts, but it is complicated on exactly how it is to be implemented and how it's all set out. And I, we are very fortunate to have Dr. Bright, who's one of the school funding experts in the state that's on our staff and has been helping us with this. So, with that said, is there, anyone want to make a motion on this?
Mr. Parker, I'd like to approve this motion as follows. A general pay increase for returning employees in the T family, plus counselors, AP 103 is outlined in House Bill 3, to increase the starting salary to $41,500 for employees in the T family. Also, a 2% minimum adjustment to pay ranges and a 3% midpoint general pay increase for eligible employees in the administrative professional, information technology, clerical paraprofessional, and the manual trades jobs families. Also, approve revisions to the district's pay plan for temporary seasonal extra-duty positions and stipends. Also, an increase to the district's health insurance contribution to $380 per month, and to continue the $500 health insurance supplement to assist employees with the increase in TRS, active care premiums and benefits, and also to compliment Dr. Bright in being able to navigate the ins and outs of the new tax law that we have, that they are incrementing, and thank you for his efforts.
Well, I'll second that motion. Do we have any other board discussion on this agenda item? Is there anyone who wants to present any public comment? If not, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say the same. The motion passes. Thank you. All right. Dr. Bright, you're up again to consider FICA alternative.
Yes, sir. Unlike the private sector, there's just a handful of school districts in the state that actually pay social security on all their employees. We currently We currently pay social security on, uh, seasonal and, and temporary employees, that includes substitute teachers, police officers and anybody we might hire on a part-time basis, uh, for seasonal work like summer, uh, maintenance or something like that. Uh, most school districts in the state have gotten completely out of social security business and gone to a plan called FICA Alternative. We've had two presentations now, it's been about two months worth of presentations for us to think about this and tonight we're ready to recommend allowing a, a company called TCG, which, uh, is, is housed out, or they house their work out of Region Ten Service Center, it's a co-op and you've had it like the presentation last week as well. We'd like for us to, uh, go to a FICA alternative plan as presented there in the, uh, packet and what will happen is our, our part-time employees will have basically, uh, kind of little savings account that it becomes their own from here on out, uh, and, uh, it will basically replace what we were putting into social security for these staff. It, it's a good deal, I know I just butchered that, but, uh, because I'm not the expert on it, but you had the expert twice now and, uh, we'd like to move forward this plan starting August first.
You might explain to our audience why the school districts doesn't contribute to social security because most people who work, uh, and their jobs have, uh, amounts that are deducted from their paycheck that go into the social security fund and, but teachers do not and most school personnel do not. So, would you explain, uh, what, what we do or what happens with teachers rather than social security?
Yeah, we're under, uh, TRS, uh, which is a retirement plan and, uh, what has, what happened back, I guess it may have been in the eighties, uh, the government gave every district a chance to get out and most of them did, just a handful stayed in. The district I came from was still in it, Austin ISD is the big one, Coleman does a little, so there's just spotty, like fourteen of them, they're still paying into social security. Uh, the problem was that, uh, when you retired from a TRS district, uh, there's something called a windfall elimination provision that impacts any social security you might have had if you had the quarters to, to earn it. And then there's another one that, uh, it's a spousal benefit that, uh, when, when your spouse was earning social security and you're retiring in TRS, when your spouse passed away, normally the benefits go to the next person, you know, the wife or the husband, whoever's left. But since you're in TRS, that gets cut big time and, uh, and so, uh, I kind of forgot where I was going with all that, Mr. Parker. But so, uh, since we're part of TRS system, our, our social security benefits, if we earn the quarters, which we do not earn quarters here, if we earn the quarters, uh, we will get just a small piece of our, uh, social security, whereas other people might get the full packet.
So, Dr. Bright, uh, a teacher that has worked, uh, an outside job for fifteen, twenty years was earning so, social security, when that teacher retires with the TRS account, her social security benefit would be greatly reduced-
Yes.
-because she was not gaining or because the district didn't participate in social security.
Well, it's a, and you know, they may have earned their forty quarters-
Mm-hmm.
-which qualifies them for social security, but once they get in the TRS, uh, there's some kind of, uh, offset that since you're getting TRS, they offset what you would have received in social security. And, uh, in fact, I have a father that's part of that, he, he worked forever when he was young, earned his quarters, but since he's TRS retiree, he only gets like a hundred thirty dollars a month, whereas somebody out in the outside world might get sixteen hundred a month. So, that's how the offset works. But that, uh, that other provision where the spousal benefits go away, that's a tough one. Uh, but we're not eligible because we're not members of social security system.
So, so Jeff, with that being said, not just teachers, but how about like your employees, you know, that aren't teachers, you know, or I know-
They're members of TRS.
They're members of TRS, so, so let's say you have an employee that's worked fifteen, twenty years, fifteen years, twenty years and gained, uh, social security-
Got their quarters.
-at a different job.
Got their quarters.
But then comes to work here-
Once they retire, once they retire and start earning TRS, then it is, their social security is offset by some factor.
Okay.
It's a, it's a hard deal.
And this, what we're doing right here, this thing we're doing right now, back to that, um, so they'll, they'll be able to go ahead and say like a, um, substitute teacher or whatever, part-time employee, says they're being put into this, meaning they won't have to wait, like if they decide to go ahead and leave, they can take that money with them, right?
Yes, and in fact, I think he said that, were they're vested immediately?
Immediately.
Yeah.
They're vested immediately, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, I, I equate it to a health savings account, it's their money.
Yeah, it's their money.
You know, they can take it out at some point, you know, there may be early withdrawal penalties and stuff, just like any other-
Yeah, but meaning they won't have to wait till they-
That's right.
-hit a certain age.
That's right.
They can just take it.
And if they're TRS retirees, it's not getting offset, that money's theirs.
I, I think the summary is that when we talked with the guy for the last two meetings is that it, with our, um, employees, they're actually more likely to see the money with the FICA alternative than they are with the social security. And so, the reason we're doing this is it's actually more likely in the vast majority of cases to get that money in their pocket versus being lost in the government's bureaucracy.
That's a perfect summary. I wish you'd asked the question to Dr. Kingman. That's, that's an excellent summary right there.
Is there any other board? I'm sorry.
I was just motion to approve, but, or to-
That's, that's what I was going to ask, all right, I forgot.
Second?
I've got a motion to approve by Dr. Kingman and a segment second by Mr. Gallegos. Any other board discussion or any public comment on this? Then I'll call a vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say the same, motion passes. All right, um, Ms. Hulahan is coming up, uh, to consider a twenty nineteen, twenty twenty waiver and conduct hearing for optional flexible school day.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Members of the board, superintendent, audience, this is a required public hearing prior to applying for a waiver which allows students to participate in an optional flexible school day program. This is our PAYS program, Preparing Area Youth for Success. PAYS is an alternative education program serving as a dropout prevention recovery program designed to respond to individual student needs. PAYS is a unique, a unique path for graduation for students who have not been successful in a traditional school setting, for whatever the reason. All students attending PAYS are under the same graduation requirements as students that attend Central High School or Lakeview High School. Um, they still have to meet the Foundation Graduation Program requirements as well as all state assessment requirements. PAYS reopened in two thousand eight, two thousand nine. To date, there have been over eleven hundred PAYS graduates. We are extremely proud and of the success of the program, the commitment of the staff and the efforts by our students. Are there any questions, comments regarding the optional flexible school day waiver?
I just have one comment. Ms. Hulahan, I just have one comment, I just want to acknowledge that you were instrumental in the rebirth of PAYS, uh, in two thousand and eight and we want to thank you for that. As you mentioned, eleven hundred students were provided access to an education, uh, because of your work and our, uh, previous superintendent, Dr. Carolyn Bond, so we want to thank you for doing that and I just think it, it really parallels to the work today of, uh, customizing an education to, to fit the students' needs. So, thank you for doing that and thank you for being a big part of student's success.
Thank you. Any other comments, audience? Based that there were no other comments, it is the administration's recommendation that the board approve the waiver to continue the PAYS program under the optionable, optional flexible school day program for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year.
Move for approval?
I have a motion by Mr. Dindell and a second by Mr. Gallegos to, uh, approve the administration's recommendation for the waiver for PAYS for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty academic year. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say the same, motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Hulahan. All right, uh, unless I've missed something on the agenda, uh, I think that concludes our agenda for tonight. We have a, um, finance pre-agenda workshop for July fifteenth, two thousand nineteen and our regular board meeting will be July twenty-second, two thousand nineteen. Uh, if there's no other announcements, uh, then this meeting is now adjourned.